Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapeta. Representing District Six, Chris Bowles. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Back. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, regular scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Gwen Myers?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I come to you thanking you for another day for us. I thank you for our honorees that's going to be honored today by this board. Bless all of our staff as we go out to do your will and your work. Bless this board meeting in your holy name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Now, it's our pleasure to present the Ninth Annual Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. Commissioner Miller, would you like to tell us a little bit about the award and our recipient this year?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. I am deeply honored to present this award for the first time. In January 2017, the Board of County Commissioners unanimously approved the creation of the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award to honor an individual or group dedicated to preserving the county's natural resources. I want to thank the members of the G and K Platt Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program Committee who reviewed this year's nominations and recommended the recipient. I believe we have a few members here today. Please stand when I call your name to be recognized. Joe Currie? Did I think? Pete Fowler? Russ Kahn? Did I miss anyone? Please stand. What is your name, ma'am?
Sally Thompson.
Sally Thompson. Thank you so much for your—oh, sorry.
Jack Brule, Chair.
Jack Brule, welcome. Thank you all very much for your service on this committee. Thank you. Now, I am proud to introduce the recipient of the 2025 Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award, Michael S. Flannery. Will you please join me at the podium? Welcome. Come around here. Face all these—very nice to meet you. A Florida Gator with a bachelor's and master's degree in forestry and aquatic science, Mr. Flannery has lived in Hillsborough County area since 1985. He is an expert in the fields of ecology, hydrology, and management of water resources with special expertise in rivers, estuaries, and their contributing watersheds. His career spanned thirty-five years, including over twenty-nine years at the Southwest Florida Water Management District. As chief environmental scientist, Mr. Flannery conducted extensive ecological research on the region's rivers and was instrumental in developing the percent-of-flow method for establishing minimum flow regulations for streams and rivers. The percent-of-flow method is now widely recognized as an effective method for water management and resource protection and is routinely used by the Water Management District to regulate water withdrawals from the rivers. Mr. Flannery worked comprehensively on the application of this method to develop environmentally protective withdrawal schedules from the Alephaya and Little Manatee Rivers in Hillsborough County, among other work. In addition, Mr. Flannery was instrumental in assessing the effects of water withdrawals from Hillsborough River and the Tampa Bypass Canal. His work in this area is a significant contribution to our county and the region, enabling an adequate supply of water for the public without harmful—without harming natural resources that we all cherish. Also impressive are Mr. Flannery's contributions as a private citizen to the management and protection of Hillsborough County's natural resources. He has nominated lands along the Little Manatee River for ELAP acquisition and worked with Hillsborough County staff to write sections of the county's land development code for minimum setbacks near streams and rivers. Since his retirement in 2014, he has served as a member of the Water Management District's Environmental Advisory Committee, a stakeholders group for the Lower Hillsborough River Minimum Flows, and on the environmental feedback group for the Environmental Protection Commission of Hillsborough County. The numerous technical reports he has authored and the biological data he has collected have been immensely valuable in the protection of the Lower River—Lower Hillsborough River, Morris Bridge Sink, Sulfur Springs, and the Little Manatee River. Mr. Flannery, your dedication and advocacy embodies the spirit of the Theodore Roosevelt Hillsborough Forever Conservation Award. Congratulations, and as part of this award, we have a beautiful framed photo of the Little Manatee River for you.
Wonderful. That's beautiful.
In addition to the plaque—in addition to this plaque, you will be able to—we have a very nice plaque—you will be able to choose an enhancement project valued at $2,000 at a Hillsborough County nature area of your choice. The Nature Enhancement Project is a courtesy of the county's late, great friend, Gus Munich. Also, your name is just the ninth to be placed on a perpetual plaque that hangs in a case here on the second floor of county service. Thank you again for all of your amazing work. Here's your plaque.
Thank you very much.
So, would you like to share some thoughts with us?
Yes, thank you very much.
Well, good morning. I am very grateful for receiving this award, as I love the natural resources of Hillsborough County and appreciate that my environmental work—which has been pretty technical at times—has been recognized by the county. I was nominated for this award by the Sierra Club Tampa Bay Group, of which seven members are here today. We, as a group, greatly appreciate how county staff and elected officials consider input from groups such as ours, as we are very close to many environmental issues the county faces. As part of my acceptance of this award, I want to quickly highlight the qualities of outstanding rivers we have in Hillsborough County. In addition to many small streams and creeks, Hillsborough County contains three rivers that flow to Tampa Bay, which are the Hillsborough, the Alephaya, and the Little Manatee. These river systems contain hundreds of miles of beautiful natural habitats for numerous aquatic and wetland plant and animal species. In addition to their freshwater reaches, the county's creeks and rivers also play important roles in maintaining the water quality and ecology of Tampa Bay, as many of the most important fishery species in the bay, such as snook, tarpon, redfish, and blue crabs, use the tidal portions of these streams as part of their life cycles. Protecting the flows, habitats, and water quality of the creeks and rivers in Hillsborough County has important benefits for maintaining the ecology and environmental quality of the entire Tampa Bay region. Of course, Hillsborough County has many other valuable habitats and ecosystems, such as forests, lakes, marshes, swamps, and even conservation easements, which in rural and suburban areas can be very valuable for environmental quality. In that regard, the Sierra Club and I would like to compliment and express our appreciation for their active roles the Hillsborough County government has taken in protecting the county's natural resources. The county's Environmental Lands Acquisition and Protection Program is one of the most outstanding land acquisition programs in the state, which has protected many square miles of beautiful and irreplaceable natural habitats and their wildlife populations. Similarly, the county's Conservation and Environmental Lands Management Department provides excellent management of many beautiful natural places in the county that our citizens can enjoy. Hillsborough County supports its own Environmental Protection Commission, which provides important local expertise in providing protection for the county's natural resources. Lastly, in its role in planning and zoning, we encourage the county to provide adequate environmental safeguards so that the growth of development in the county is compatible with the protection of its natural resources. So, on behalf of myself and the Sierra Club, thank you once again for this award, and let's all, in the government, private, and public sectors, strive to continue to appreciate, protect, and manage Hillsborough County's wonderful natural resources. Again, thank you very much.
At this time, I'd like to see if I have any fellow commissioners that would like
that's Tampa General Hospital.
to say anything?
And at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Benjamin Mackey, Medical Director of the Heart Don't see anyone in the queue. Congratulations, sir. Transplant Center of Tampa General Hospital, to please join me at the podium. You're joining an extremely passionate and experienced and exceptional group, so my Not only is Dr. Mackey the medical director of the transplant center, he serves in other congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And go Gators.
Yes, yes, go Gators. Could the members of the ELAP committee come up, and we're going to get a photo. We're going to have you hold all these good things.
capacity as well. He's the cardiologist of advanced heart failure, mechanical circulatory support, and transplant;
Come back here and get a photo. Watch this spot right here. One, two, three. Joe. 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 Would you like to write in the comments?
No, I don't. Okay, thanks. Bye-bye.
the vice president and medical director of Tampa General Hospital's Heart and Vascular Institute; and co-medical director of Tampa General's HVI Heart Failure Center of Excellence. Throughout its history, Tampa General Hospital has achieved tremendous milestones in organ transplants. The hospital is one of the top organ transplant centers in the country, having performed more than thirteen thousand adult solid organ transplants, including the state's first successful heart transplant in 1985. Today, the board is honoring Tampa General Hospital for being the number-one hospital in the nation for transplants by volume in 2024. An amazing accomplishment. It's my pleasure to present this commendation in recognition of the hospital's latest achievement. It reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to congratulate Tampa General Hospital for being ranked as number-one hospital in the nation for transplants by volume in 2024. A tremendous achievement and inspiring example of dedication and compassion. For over fifty years, Tampa General Hospital has served a dozen counties as one of the most comprehensive medical facilities in west-central Florida. In addition to being ranked number-one hospital in Tampa Bay by U.S. News and World Report for 2024 and 2025, the hospital's nationally ranked as among the top fifty hospitals in the nation in eight specialties. One of its most well-known and successful specialties is organ transplants. Having completed eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine transplants between January one and December thirty-first, 2024, Tampa General Hospital is ranked first in the nation in performing this complex procedure, completing the most of any transplant center in the nation that year, as well as setting a new national record for transplant procedures in a single year." This groundbreaking milestone further illustrates the hospital's reputation as one of the nation's leading academic health systems. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Tampa General Hospital for its compassionate work as a life-saving medical institution. Congratulations to the hospital on its latest achievement, in which it many years of continued success executed the sixteenth day of April 2025, signed by all seven of the Board of County Commissioners. Dr. Mackey, congratulations on the tremendous work you and your staff have done. It's my honor to present this to you, and would you please say a few words?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Well, Chair Hagan and BOCC, it's on behalf of TGH and USFL, deeply honored to receive this commendation. You know, at TGH, we say, "We heal, we teach, we innovate, we care for every patient every day." And I think that the number of transplants that we did last year is really a reflection of our commitment to this community, to bringing life-saving therapies, clinical excellence, and world-class care to the Tampa Bay area. Every single transplant that's performed is a life saved, and we all come to work every day with that in mind. And I think, in addition to the number of transplants that we do—which I think is the metric that we most commonly reflect upon—it's important to also think about, how do those patients do? And we're equally committed to the quality of outcomes in these patients, and I'm happy to say that we have national-class outcomes in our transplant program. You know, our commitment to the community goes beyond. We come to work every day trying to push the boundaries of transplant medicine, driving innovation and research. We have over seventy active clinical trials related to transplantation right now, and it's through those efforts that we hope to develop new knowledge and new techniques that help us save even more lives in the decades ahead. You know, I'm one team member of a very large team. We have hundreds of team members that participate in the care of transplant patients at Tampa General, and everybody plays an integral role in making that happen. I want to recognize all those people—obviously too many to name—but know that transplant medicine is very much a team sport, and there's a lot of very dedicated people that come to work every day at our hospital to try to help save as many lives as we can in the community. I think importantly, it's April, it's Donate Life Month, and I think the most important team member when we talk about transplantation is probably the donor family. You know, anytime a transplant occurs, it's a tragedy that's turned into a moment of hope, a tragedy for the donor family, but a moment of hope for the recipient family. And I think it's very important that we spend some time reflecting upon that this month, Donate Life Month, create awareness around the importance of organ donation. You know, at any given time, over a hundred thousand people are on the list nationwide needing an organ transplant, and around twenty-two die every day waiting because we have a shortage of donor organs. So, the more that we can get the word out that it's a great gift to give if the tragedy occurs, it'll end up helping save more lives and hopefully close that gap between recipients and donors. So, with that, just want to thank the board again and Chair Hagan again for the recognition, and it's really a true pleasure to be a part of this community and provide care to the Tampa Bay area. So, thank you very much.
And in closing, Dr. Mackey, I just want to personally, I want to thank you, your entire team, not only for the unbelievable life-saving work that your team in Tampa General Hospital performs, but as you indicated, all of the outstanding academic and research work that goes on at TGH, and as I mentioned in my opening remarks, and I've been a commissioner for a long time, and I can say that Tampa General Hospital is by far, if not our number-one corporate and community partner, definitely in the top two or three. And so, you guys do outstanding work in the community. Just do so much, and just again, thank you very much and appreciate all the work that you do, and let's take a photo. Now, Commissioner Cohen will present our last proclamation.
Before you leave, because the next proclamation is declaring April 2025 as Donate Life Month. I would like to ask the following individuals to join me here at the podium. Ashley Moore, the manager of Public Affairs at the Lifelink Foundation, and Tammy Davidson, who is a Lifelink volunteer. Good morning and welcome. For more than thirty years, Lifelink has been instrumental in providing life-saving and life-enhancing tissue allografts to patients in need. Its vision is to maximize the gift of life while giving hope to donor families and transplant patients. Its mission is to honor donors and save lives through organ and tissue donation, and its values can be best summed up in five words: compassion, excellence, legacy, people, and quality. It is my pleasure to present this proclamation to Ms. Moore, recognizing the importance of organ and tissue donations as we declare April 2025 as Donate Life Month. The proclamation reads, "Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life, and whereas more than one hundred thousand men, women, and children are currently on the national waiting list for organ transplantation, of which over five thousand reside in Florida, and whereas over forty-eight thousand transplants occurred in 2024 in the United States, thanks to the generosity of over twenty-four thousand deceased and living donors, and whereas in 2024, Lifelink of Florida honored more donors than ever before, serving three-hundred-and-sixty-one organ donors who provided more than nine-hundred-and-thirty-six life-saving transplants to patients in need, and whereas more than two-point-five million people throughout the nation and in Florida benefit annually from tissue transplantation thanks to thousands of tissue donors, and whereas the need for organ, eye, and tissue donation remains critical as a new patient is added to the national waiting list for an organ transplant every eight minutes, and each day roughly sixteen people die due to the lack of available organs, and whereas more than eleven million Floridians have already registered to give the gift of life through organ and tissue donation at www.donatelifeflorida.org or on their driver's licenses, and whereas Lifelink of Florida is dedicated to the memory of organ and tissue transplantation donors with a mission to honor donors and save lives through organ and tissue donation. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare April 2025 as Donate Life Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents to consider leaving an infinite legacy through organ donation, and to sign up at www.mystorycontinues.com or when renewing their driver's license or state identification card. And this proclamation is executed the sixteenth day of April 2025. And Ms. Moore, we'd like to invite you to say a few words at this time.
Good morning. Ms. Moore has given me the floor. I will briefly tell you my connection to organ donation. My son DJ passed away eight years ago, and he was able to save the lives of four people and enhance the lives of seventy-four more through tissue donation. Although this was a tragedy for our family, we have personally been able to see the amazing thing it has done for the other families. I have actually met three of DJ—I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you, his name was DJ—of DJ's organ recipients, and I actually got to hear my son's heartbeat. So, for me to be standing here, it truly is an honor. I hope that if you are not already an organ donor, that you would seriously consider it. The message I send to people is, you never know what you are going to face in life, and one day you could be the one that is needing that life-saving transplant, and I'm honored to be here to accept this proclamation today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Bonnie, would you like to review the changes to the agenda?
Thank you. Good morning. We have one item for board consideration pursuant to Rule thirteen of the Rules of Order. This is by Commissioner Hagan, item F two. This is to introduce a volunteer employee prevention-focused pilot program to address mental health challenges through education. We have one revision, or correction to the agenda. It's item A twenty-four, which is the resolution authorizing a lease agreement between Hillsborough County and the Hillsborough County Water and Soil and Water Conservation District. It should read, "There is a nominal rent of $1 for the entire term of the lease." We have a few items for time certain. Item E one at ten o'clock. This is to receive a special appearance by Mr. John Michael Elms, Chair of the Citizens' Advisory Committee, to present an update on CAC activities and accomplishments. Eleven forty-five is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion for the changes.
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote on the changes to the agenda.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, the board will go into the public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concerns. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. However, at the same time, it is requested that when you address the board, comments are not made directly at board members or staff, but rather the issues. The board has set aside forty-five minutes for public comment this morning. When you come forward, please state your name, speak clearly in the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. I will tell you, we have twenty-one individuals that have signed up this morning, so if everyone takes a full three minutes, we will not get to everyone this morning. First three speakers, Denise Herndon, Stacy Ransom, and then Lois Price. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. We've had a few speakers here today with getting awards, and one thing on the agenda is Mosaic giving thousands of acres of property to the Hillsborough County. What are you guys going to do when that property is contaminated, or will we find out when this BOCC isn't in existence? The other thing on the agenda is, we're spending over eleven million dollars on computers, and that's awesome, but what's going on about the falsified and hacked records in the Sheriff's Department, clerk of the courts, that just little old me has found out in my little life? Shirlene Hammond has been my son's dark web person since she was his school bus driver when she drugged him and got him raped at ten and a half years old. Jeff Bezos in ninety-six found my son building a Pokemon website and took that Pokemon website over when my—in two thousand two to two thousand three, when my son started working for Bright House. Why does one of the richest men in the world now want a child's website? I guarantee that there are so many kids that are being sexually exploited through this website, and I wonder if my grandson isn't one of them and has been one since he was months old. One thing people don't know about with organ donor when it's on your license—and this needs to change—as a respiratory therapist, I would be with these people that are going to be organ donors, but if the family doesn't agree with that designation on a driver's license, they can rescind it. That's wrong, because that person chose to have that on their driver's license, and nobody else should be able to rescind it unless, for some reason, their organs aren't viable. A lot of people don't know this. With the Sheriff's Department, I've been considered a mental health issue. Well, then, I'm being psychotic right now. A neighbor of mine that was—I'm thinking retired in the military, Bill Rogers, he came up to me less than an inch from my neck and my face screaming and yelling at me.
We've had a few speakers here today with getting awards, and one thing on the agenda is Mosaic giving thousands of acres of property to Hillsborough County. What are you guys going to do when that property is contaminated? Or will we find out when this BOCC isn't in existence? The other thing on the agenda is we're spending over $11 million on computers, and that's awesome, but what's going on about the falsified and hacked records in the Sheriff's Department, Clerk of the Courts, that just little old me has found out in my little life? Shirlene Hammond has been my son's dark web person since she was his school bus driver when she drugged him and got him raped at 10 and 1/2 years old. Jeff Bezos in 96 found my son building a Pokemon website and took that Pokemon website over in 2002 to 2003 when my son started working for Bright House. Why does one of the richest men in the world now want a child's website? I guarantee that there are so many kids that are being sexually exploited through this website, and I wonder if my grandson isn't one of them and has been one since he was months old. One thing people don't know about with organ donor when it's on your license, and this needs to change, as a respiratory therapist, I would be with these people that are going to be organ donors, but if the family doesn't agree with that designation on a driver's license, they can rescind it. That's wrong, because that person chose to have that on their driver's license, and nobody else should be able to rescind it unless for some reason their organs aren't viable. A lot of people don't know this. With the Sheriff's Department, I've been considered a mental health issue. Well, then I'm being psychotic right now. A neighbor of mine that was, I'm thinking retired in the military, Bill Rogers, he came up to me less than an inch from my neck and my face screaming and yelling at me. That's a reason to be bakeracted, but the Sheriff's Department falsified records, my medical records were hacked into, and doctors falsified medical records to keep me bakeracted for saying things that I'm saying right now. Shirlene Hammond will never get my home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Next three speakers are Stacy Ransom, who's virtual, followed by Lois Price and William Nielsen. Is Ms. Ransom on the line? All right, we'll come back.
Mr. Chair, Stacy Ransom did not check in.
Okay. Ms. Ransom didn't check in. Lois Price, followed by William Nielsen, and then Kathleen Arnold. Good morning.
Good morning. I am Lois Price. I live in West Chase. Starting last August, we at Hope held small congregational house meetings where we listened to the concerns of thousands of county residents. Many spoke of their despair as the cost of housing rose above their means. The culmination of the listening process was last week's Nehemiah Action, where more than 1,200 people assembled to hear how their elected officials will address the affordable housing crisis. You were all invited to attend. Commissioner Cohen, we thank you for taking time to address your constituents at the action. Commissioner Hagan, you represent my neighborhood. I'm sorry that you and other commissioners did not prioritize attending this grassroots assembly. I'd like to share portions of this morning's devotional from Reverend Cameron Trimble. Quote, "I woke this morning with grief curled in my chest. I found myself grieving not just the danger that we're in, but the future we thought we might have. I am grieving who we might have been as a nation and what could have been possible if we had chosen care over cruelty, integrity over impulse, courage over control. This is not just political grief, it is soul grief, and it's not a detour, it is the path. On Palm Sunday, Jesus entered Jerusalem not on a warhorse, but on a donkey, a protest march against empire. He exposed injustice. For that, He was betrayed, arrested, disappeared, but He never lost the thread of love, even in grief, even in the dark. That story holds a mirror to ours today. We are not living in peacetime, not spiritually or politically. These are trying days. We are called to walk them with open eyes and cracked hearts. We are opposing disembodied logic that says that only power matters. We are opposing the lie that numbness is strength, that detachment is wisdom, that love has no place in politics. The truth is that grief is political and care is political. So this week, let us rise as people who still choose to love, as people who still choose to walk each other home, as people who will not disappear into despair, because we belong to one another, and the story is not over yet. We are in this together," end quote. Against all odds, commissioners, we still trust that you will fully fund the creation of affordable housing in this county. We're counting on you to hear the cries of your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price. William Nielsen, followed by Kathleen Arnold, and then Chris Kravitz. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Billy Nielsen, and I'm here on behalf of the Tampa Bay Crew Rugby Community. We are a nonprofit organization that was founded as a men's team back in 1991. Today, we have two men's teams, a women's team, and a thriving youth program with high school-aged boys under 19 and under 16. We have under 19 girls and a youth program with U14, U12, and U10. We have also started an endowment partnership with the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay. It is a rugby family with hundreds of members and growing. Tampa is home to the only club in the state to have men, women, and youth, and one of only a handful of clubs in the nation to have won both men's and women's national championships. Also, congrats to the women who just won another state title this past weekend. With the success of USA Rugby and this past Summer Olympics, it's also one of the fastest-growing youth and women's sports in the country. As an example of that, this weekend Tampa's host to one of the largest youth rugby tournaments in the country, with over 150 teams from across the world playing at the Sportsplex. I am here today to ask the commission for an opportunity to keep helping us grow. I have been with the club for over 15 years as a player and a coach. Both of my kids now play in our youth program, and throughout my tenure with the club, practice and playing fields have been a continuous issue for us. We have worked with the county and the city Parks and Recs Department over the years and are consistently faced with roadblocks. We have been shuffled and moved around to over eight fields over the last few years. We have had to host events in St. Petersburg and even as far south as Sarasota for various reasons. We have offered and pleaded to renovate and revive multiple cities that the club would pay for in order to call field home. The club paid and had goalposts installed at Cascaden Park off North 15th many years ago, and now we can't even use Cascaden because it creates parking issues. The club has national team players and coaches. Players have gone on to play professionally. Youth players are getting scholarships domestically and overseas in places like Japan and Wales. We are all passionate about this sport and this rugby community in Tampa. We are asking for an opportunity to help us continue to grow and give back to the sport that has given so much to so many locally. Thank you.
Ms. Nielsen, thank you for being here and for everyone that came down here, and also as a former coach in a different sport, baseball. I always say that some of life's greatest lessons are learned both on and off of the field, and so thank you for being here. Our Parks Director, I think he was in the back of the room here, he's going to talk to you, and I appreciate you coming and sharing your concerns.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Kathleen Arnold, followed by Chris Kravitz, and then Bernice Powell Jackson.
My name is Cathy Arnold. I'm a resident of Tampa, and I thank you for allowing me to come before you. I raised four children, which sadly you don't receive a paycheck for, and I also dealt with a severe mental illness, so is on disability as I was unable to hold on in employment. Now I am 65, and I depend on a meager social security check and look at an undetermined future. Fortunately, my daughter has helped me through my hard times. I know how lucky I am, but she too is facing an undetermined future. On April 8th, Hope, Hillsborough Organization for Progress in Equality, held an event and thousands were in attendance. The facts were horrifying. Thousands of your residents are homeless. It encompasses seniors, blacks, whites, and Latinos, as well as mentally and physically ill individuals. Among those are our veterans, for which there is no excuse. They fought for this country, and now they have no place to live. I was close to tears because I realized how close I was to being included in those statistics. Before the event, Hope personally invited you. At that time, you were given questions, so you knew what you would be asked. Sadly, the only commissioner who was kind enough to attend was Mr. Harry Cohen. He pledged his vote behind placing the $10 million back into the budget. I thank him very much for his response. In the last two years, you have only adjudicated $2 million, taking away $8 million to be placed elsewhere. Sadly, I was disappointed by your choice not to attend. It is too important for you to close your eyes and cover your ears in an attempt to ignore the atrocities of the very people you represent. May I say, shame on you. We are employing every one of you for your help. The $10 million needs to be returned to the budget for affordable housing. So next time your constituents come before you, and as for your vital assistance, please listen, I beg of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Arnold. Next up is Chris Kravitz, followed by Bernice Powell Jackson.
Good morning. I'm Chris Kravitz, pastor in Waters Avenue Church and Bay Shore Baptist Church. You all know why we're here, of course, affordable housing. You're going to hear lots of stories. You've heard the statistics. We don't need to keep repeating them over and over, but we are going to keep showing up over and over until we see $10 million restored, approved. Restore is not the right word, is it? It's already recommended each year. We just need to see it voted through. That's what we want to see. You're going to see 1,000 postcards filled out by people of this county that are going to be delivered to each of you who are not at the Nehemiah Action. 1,000 postcards that people took the time to fill out, we took the time to sort, that we took the time to bring here. People care about this, and that's just the people that attended the Nehemiah Action. Thousands more in this community care about this, and tens of thousands need affordable housing. So the ask is simple. This next budget cycle, 10 million, vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Bernice Powell Jackson.
I'm Reverend Bernice Powell Jackson. I'm pastor of First United Church of Tampa. And first, I want to say we're grateful to Commissioner Cohen, who attended our Nehemiah Action last week, where, as you heard, we brought together more than 1,200 people from across this county, probably the largest grassroots meeting of our county, all of whom know that there is a housing crisis in our county. And we wish all of you had been there to see your constituents and for them to have seen you and for you to have heard the testimonies of real people. Like the others from Hope who are here today, we're not here because we have nothing else to do, or not even because we love coming to county commission meetings, but because we believe deeply and faithfully that we, as a county, can do better and can be better. We can be both more compassionate, and we can make better economic decisions for our county. We can do this by investing, and yes, that's the correct word, investing in more affordable housing for the people who live and work, who play and pray in our county. The facts don't lie, and the facts tell us that for every dollar we invest in affordable housing, we get six more dollars back in state and federal and private funds and a stronger economy. The facts tell us that children do better in school when they have stable and safe housing. We know that the crisis was made worse by two hurricanes last year. We also know that employers need workers who live close to work, and we know that thousands of workers in our county struggle each and every month to find a place that they can afford to live. And we, who are people of faith, are required, required, to love our neighbors as ourselves and to care for the least of these. And so today, I join my colleagues from Hope in asking you to restore the $10 million to the Hope Affordable Housing Fund. It is the least that we can do. It's the right thing for you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Hamira Alzal.
Feel strongly enough about that that I go around in a T-shirt that says that. The fact that so many people in Hillsborough are unhoused or housing costs burdened is a policy choice. It is a reflection of choices that elected representatives and policymakers have made over many decades. It is also the inevitable outcome of an economic system that treats housing as a commodity to be bought, sold, or rented at the highest possible price. If you take a look at Tampa Bay Times today, go in the business section, you'll see a headline, "Private Equity Owns Nearly 25% of Tampa Bay Apartments." Housing crisis is not due to a shortage of wealth and resources, it is due to severe inequities with the distribution of wealth and resources. The county commission has an opportunity to start working to alleviate the affordable housing crisis that is affecting your constituents. Let's talk about that impact just briefly. Over 4,200 children in Hillsborough lack a fixed, regular, adequate nighttime residence. 4,200 children, that we know of. The numbers are going up, not down. They're going up at a steady pace. Seniors are the fastest-growing homeless population. 59% of seniors are financially burdened due to housing costs. Lots more details in the program from the Hope Nehemiah Action. The lack of affordable housing affects everyone, and it is a drag on the local economy. The good news is that you don't have to start from scratch in addressing the affordable housing crisis in Hillsborough. An easy start. You can't go back in time and change your vote when you slashed Hope Funds for the 2025 budget, but you can vote to fully fund Hope for 2026. It is unfortunate that only Commissioner Cohen, and we thank you, attended the Hope Nehemiah Action last week. The 1,200 attendees all noticed the absence of the rest of you. It was an exceptionally well-run program. I will email you the program in case you overlooked it when Hope most certainly sent it earlier. This board has been focused on efficiency and best use of taxpayer dollars. There's an overemphasis on just decreasing expenses, but there are things when the entire community benefits by the expenditure of taxpayer dollars. Full funding of Hope programs is one of those things. Hamira Alzal.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Justin LaRose, followed by Lori Jones Olukwu.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. Busy week. So good to see you all. My name is Justin LaRosa. I'm the pastor of the Portico, one of the ministers at Hyde Park United Methodist Church. I'm not going to shock and awe you with all the statistics, all that stuff. You already know them, you heard them. Just a couple of simple requests. Number one, meet with us. You know, I admired Commissioner Owens, who was the commissioner who decided to try to whack the Affordable Housing Fund, because he met with us. And then he went to the Nehemiah Action, and he had conversation. That's one of the things I'm asking those of you who haven't met with us, and we've requested, it's been crickets, to meet with us. I appreciate Commissioner Bowles, and he can probably vouch that we don't bite. I had a good conversation with Commissioner Cohen. We thank you for coming as well. You know, I don't think we need to pit sidewalks in health and safety against affordable housing. We can do both. And as I say every time I'm here, and I'll say it again, if we don't want more people sleeping on sidewalks and roads, we'll invest in affordable housing. There's ways to do it, and there's a simple way to do it, and it's just for you to say yes. It's already there. And I know there are people around this semicircle who have deep disagreements around how to make that happen, and that's fine. Meet with us. Let's get this done. I work right downtown. There are people sleeping under the place where I work every day, and there's ways that we can do that. And we're not just talking about that, we're talking about seniors. Did you know, since April 2023, the senior affordable housing list has been closed? No one's been able to sign up. We had a guy sleeping under the Portico for probably six months that we housed through one of our programs, Portico Housing Solutions, who was 69 years old, never been homeless ever, and he was 187, and it took over two years to get into affordable housing, which he is in now, off of Manhattan. Friends, we have a serious problem. This isn't just about politics. This ordinance was passed with a bipartisan commission. We can do it again. We can work together, but we can't work together if you don't meet with us. But we'll just keep showing up, you know? That's what I'll keep doing. My faith tells me that the least of these must be paid attention to, as well as everybody else. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Lori Jones Olukwu, followed by Sheila Simmons.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. I'm Lori Jones Olukwu, and I'm here again today to talk about the Affordable Housing Fund, and I'll keep showing up with the rest of my friends from Hope to talk about that. But I want to share a testimony from one of my neighbors. I live in Pebble Creek, and this is a call for help for one of my neighbors, and I can't really say they are my neighbors because they live in a tent. This is an urging housing request, and the woman says, "My husband and I have been living in a tent since March 6. We have been trying so hard to get anywhere with housing. I'm so tired of all of this moving around, and I need..." I'm so tired of all of this moving around, and I need stability. I'm disabled and heat-sensitive for medications. I keep getting sick and nauseous about us. I have SSDI." She's apparently collecting that for disability. "My husband goes to Action Labor and picks up whatever work he can every day. He's laid off from the donation center where he... It's been closed down for construction. Once they're reopened, he'll be working again. Our situation, we need to stay local due to the car acting up in the hot temperatures. It's an electrical problem." She's pouring her heart out to her neighbors, trying to figure out what to do for housing. Her housing requirements are simple. Their budget is $750 to $800 until the end of July. I guess he'll have his job back then. A room, a studio apartment, one-bedroom, utilities, Wi-Fi, or permission to set up a tent in our backyard, one of our backyards, somewhere with occasional access to a cool indoor place. Additionally, we offer our services, like light, house chores. If you are able to assist or know someone who might be able to provide housing, answer questions." And she closes by saying, "We are a quiet, happy couple who are finally getting caught up with bills. We would be deeply appreciative of your kindness and assistance in securing a home." So I'm going to say thank you, Commissioner Cohen, for showing up, and you care about helping couples like this. But I beg the rest of you commissioners to show your leadership. There are couples who live in or close to my neighborhood in New Tampa who are literally just begging to set up a tent in my backyard. These are the types of couples who are low-income, working couples who need your leadership. And I beg you to do that by putting back the $10 million in the Hope Fund. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Sheila Simmons, followed by Matthew Rector-Virtual.
Good morning, commissioners. I know you've seen me here several times, and yes, I am back again this morning. My name is Sheila Simmons Struble, and I am a member of Bible-Based Fellowship Church and co-chair of the Hope Affordable Housing Committee and Mental Health and Addiction. On April the 8th, we had over 1,200 residents to attend the Nehemiah Action at Bible-Based Fellowship Church. And as someone has said earlier, this is one of the largest gatherings within our community, particularly addressing community issues. Now, all seven of the commissioners were invited, and Commissioner Cohen, as my colleagues have said, we really appreciate you being there. And everyone else, all of you were missed. And I know that the residents would have loved to have seen you there, but the issue is, this is a community-centered priority, a community-centered priority. And by that, I mean it impacts every segment of our community, not only working families, not only low and very low-income families, but also veterans, people with disabilities. But it also impacts, that centered also impacts our business community, our hospitals, our schools. And so for this very reason, we are asking you to think about, and please, please, go forth and show leadership in putting the $10 million back into the budget. Now, this morning, we have over 1,200 signed postcards that people signed at the Nehemiah Action, and my colleagues behind me have them, and we will give them to you, give it to the secretary, and the secretary can give it to the rest of you. Now, we really do need your leadership in this particular situation. People are struggling. They're struggling to put roofs over their heads. They're struggling to buy medicine. They're struggling with mental health issues. And today is the opportunity that we can put this in the center of our community, because what we need is housing for every segment of our community, and particularly those that cannot speak for themselves. Every person deserves a decent and a safe home. So this morning, we're going to share and give these cards to you, but we are going to continue to stand tall and stand tall for those that cannot speak for themselves, stand tall for the conviction, but above all, stand tall for this community-centered priority, and that is housing for all. Right now, I asked my colleagues if you would give it to the secretary, and each of you will receive the cards. People took the time last Tuesday night to pass these out.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up is Matthew Rector-Virtually, followed by Willa Peterson In Person.
Thank you. Matthew Rec, president of the Reserve at West Park Village Homeowners Association, a sub-association in the West Chase community. Honorable Hillsborough County Commissioners, please approve the construction of a proposed crosswalk on Linebaugh Avenue in West Chase, near West Chase Elementary School. Those who oppose state that a crosswalk in this area will increase traffic. However, a designated crosswalk does not inherently cause more traffic. It manages it more safely. The reality is simple. People, including kids, parents, and seniors, are already currently jaywalking anyway because easy-walking access in front of the school is not there. It's better to accommodate and protect real behavior patterns than pretend they don't exist. The crosswalks that are already in place are not sufficient. They are all very far away and can add up to one-hour round trip by foot to get to a school literally across the street from West Park Village. This is why people in my community don't use them and decide instead to illegally cross. Let's help them out. A formal crossing would make it safer, more visible, and more manageable for both pedestrians and drivers. Concerns about congestion, business impact, and cost are far outweighed by the need to protect real behavior with real infrastructure. The projected cost for the crosswalk is well justified when balanced against injury risk and community need. Besides, safe walking access also improves foot traffic to local businesses as well. It does not prohibit it. It is my privilege and responsibility to be a good representative of my community as the president of a board of directors of a community within West Chase's borders, one that stands to benefit greatly from the proposed crosswalk. And regardless of what you're hearing from other bodies, residents themselves in our specific part of West Chase and in West Park Village do in fact strongly support the crosswalk. I urge you, I beg you, please do not wait for a kid to get hurt or killed before we take action. I beg you to ask yourself a simple question. Why wouldn't there be a crosswalk directly in front of a school? Remember, the kids, the parents, the residents are already crossing anyway, so let's do it the safest way. You have all been sent an email that details these points, and I thank you for your time and service to our county, and I look forward to speaking on this matter again at the public meeting in West Chase on May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rector, for your comments. Willa Peterson, followed by Kenneth Key, and then Melissa Volker. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Willa Peterson. I am a member of Bible-Based Fellowship Church, and I am the founder and president of a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, Sheltering the Unsheltered Incorporated. I do have photos that we have taken that I want to share with you so that you can see that homelessness is real. Our mission is to provide our unsheltered neighbors who live on the streets in Tampa with their daily necessities to improve their well-being and to restore dignity. Today, I'm going to talk with you about a public health crisis we have affecting thousands of people here in Hillsborough County. At least 157,816 households with very, very low and extremely low income spent one-third of their income on housing. Of those households, 90,548 households are spending over half of their income on housing. If you attended, and Commissioner Cohen, we do thank you for attending our Nehemiah Action last week. Everyone was invited. However, if you attended, you would have heard the unfortunate alarming number of at least 1,893 unsheltered, and they call themselves open-air residents who live on the streets. And I do believe that number is low. If you accepted the invitation to attend Nehemiah Action, you would have heard that 59% of seniors aged 62 and over are financially burdened in the fast-growing population of homelessness. They are not living on the streets, you see, because they want to. They are living on the streets because they simply cannot afford the rent. Homelessness, commissioners, is real. You don't have to go far. Just look across the street when you leave here this evening, and as you prepare to go to your lovely homes, you will see the people across the street who are homeless. While when housing is attained, everything changes. Health is stabilized, people get jobs, families are reunited. Affordable housing is economically sound compared to the emergency shelters, jail, and also to hospital visits. I urge the commissioners to commit to restoring at least $10 million to the budget. You know, the Word of God in Matthew 25:35 tells us that the least of these we do for our brothers, we do it unto God. And one of those things is to provide housing, to take people in when they don't have a place to live. I pray you put yourselves in the place of our unsheltered homeless, open-air residents who are happy when it rains, because you know what they tell me? "It's raining now, I can get a bath." Or who tell me, "I haven't had anything to eat in three days." They're out there in scorching weather.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
They're out there when it's cold.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please put yourselves in...
Appreciate your comments. Our next three speakers are Kenneth Key, followed by Melissa Volker, and then Cheryl Henley. Mr. Key here. Okay, Melissa Volker. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Volker. I'm a member of the Bible-Based Fellowship Church of Tampa Bay. I want to thank Commissioner Cohen for attending the Hope Nehemiah Action on April 8th. Hillsborough County has an affordable housing crisis, and the most vulnerable among us need our support. We request that today you choose kindness and urge you to approve the full budget for affordable housing in 2026. In the words of Langston Hughes, "I'm so tired of waiting," aren't you? "For the world to become good and beautiful and kind." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Volker. Cheryl Henley, followed by Dr. Neil Manamala. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Cheryl Henley from St. Mark's Episcopal Church in Citrus Park. I do want to thank Commissioner Cohen for attending the Nehemiah Action. It was very powerful, and I hope that the rest of you will come on the next invitation and, as Pastor LaRosa said, maybe begin meeting with us to learn what we're about and what we want to have happen. In my congregation, which is, I would consider affluent, we have had three of our members have to move out of state in order to find housing. One family is a married couple, and the gentleman who, he and his wife just signed their lease in November, and in December, his wife got a job in New Jersey, which paid more. He's actually received a kidney transplant. He's under the care of Tampa General, the person we just heard from earlier. So she lives in New Jersey and is working, making enough money that they can afford this lease that they have here for this year. So after this year, I don't know what they'll have to do. In order, his care is here, they have to be able to afford to live. So I ask that you consider including the $10 million back into the budget. I think it's important, if you meet with us, you will learn what our priorities are and what we are asking, and that would be a way to move forward with this ability to get housing for people who are working in the daycare, their nursing assistants, their teacher assistants. They work in the food services, in the hospitality. They're not making enough money to pay the rents that are actually typical in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Neer Manamala, followed by Russ Miller. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dr. Neil Manamala. I am a physician out in East Hillsborough where I take care of families in some of their most vulnerable moments. And right now, I'm just here as a concerned citizen. In my medical practice as a urologist, I see patients who are homeless and barely have a home all the time. Many of them are seniors, the fastest-growing homeless population in our county. In just the last five years, the number of homeless seniors has more than doubled here in Hillsborough County. They miss appointments. They can't access to treatments we prescribe. They return to the ER again and again with kidney failure, prostate issues, untreated infections, conditions that poison the body and too often poison their dignity. We're not just dealing with a shortage of housing units. We're confronting a gap between our values and our investments. That's why I join with Hope and thousands within our county urging you to fully restore the $10 million committed to the Hope Affordable Housing Program. I understand that resources are limited. I understand that infrastructure, public safety, and economic growth all do matter. But let's be clear. Housing is infrastructure. Housing is public safety. Housing is health. Stable housing keeps families working, keeps kids learning, and keeps businesses hiring. When we invest in housing, we're investing in stability, in families, in futures. On this holy week, Scripture reminds us that God is near to the brokenhearted. And as we approach Easter, a season of resurrection and renewal, we were reminded that what feels broken can be made whole, that what feels lost can be restored. I believe we are called, whatever our politics, whatever our party, to draw near to working families who are hurting and to do the hard work of healing in our community. So let us be bold. Let us be builders, not just of roads and bridges, but of lives. Because the people of Hillsborough aren't asking for handouts. They are asking for a foundation. They're asking for a future, a home. The people of Hillsborough are asking for hope. Thank you guys so much, to each and every single one of you, and may God bless you.
Thank you, doctor. Appreciate your comments. Russ Miller, followed by Adamar Saucetto. Good morning, sir.
Morning. My name is Russ Miller. I live in Lutes. I'm an analyst and a political organizer. Thank you. I was recently priced out of my own home, an apartment in Pebble Creek, when rent rose from one-third of my income to more than half. Homes for sale have become scarce and expensive. My parents purchased the home they live in now in Lutes in 1978 for $92,000. A new housing development just went up right next door to them, where houses were supposed to be priced in the low 900s, but a new sign has gone up saying they'll be starting at $1.2 million. I recently met with Connie Burton of the NAACP. She introduced me to a black woman in her 40s who, although she was employed full-time as a cook, did not earn enough money to afford rent in a Hillsborough County apartment. She was frustrated by programs that never provided very much in assistance and required her to go all over town to make appointments and attend seminars, never really amounting enough to pay rent. At the end of her rope, she was calling out for revolution, for uprising. As government becomes less sympathetic to the plight of ordinary residents, indeed hostile towards them, sending us to prisons overseas, demanding we present expensive passports just to vote, and that we suffer through violent wars and economic disruptions, we live in times of instability and distress on an overheating planet. The one thing people need most is a home they can own, a place where there is food, sanitation, rest, and safety. When people rent and live from paycheck to paycheck, as most people now do, there is no safety. When there is no safety, there is despair, and we see that in places like Gaza, where there is anarchy. We can make Hillsborough County a safer place, where many more families have a future. where many more families have a future, a future secured through homeownership. The more resources you allocate towards affordable homes, the less fear and chaos those families will experience. As Commissioner Cohen told us at our Nehemiah Action last week, $10 million is not the least we can do. We can do much more. We can reduce expenditures on all the disruption homelessness brings. Homeless people are very likely to experience mental illness and to be incarcerated for lack of available care for those illnesses. You can bring hope to your people, thousands of them, and you can do it during the holiest time of most of our religions. As they used to say in the Peace Corps, "Today is an opportunity to do something good and to feel something real." Please approve more funding for affordable homes for purchase. This is not theft from the rich. It is righteous and just.
Thank you, sir. Adamar Sausetto, and he'll be our last speaker this morning. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, whoever is here at the meeting. I sent some documents to the Internet, to Washington, D.C., and I fly myself to U.S. Attorney General in Washington, D.C., to get 35 years of service. And Sotomayori was in charge of this. And this letter I sent it to her. And I request a carpet of investigation, Circuit 6, in Washington, D.C. And it's a lot of corruption where I'm coming from, Reno, in Washington, D.C. And all these documents supposedly, Washington, D.C. is supposed to send these documents to Florida, to Circuit 15. And I'm going to invoke the Number 5 amendment to the board's commissioners, and the same thing to the state of Florida, the Circuit 15.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, that closes our public comment. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers. Second, Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote on the consent
Motion carried, 6 to 0.
Okay. Bonnie, our first item?
Thank you. The first item is our time-certain item, Item E1. This is to receive a special appearance by Mr. John Michael Elms, who's the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Chairman Hagan, Vice Chair Miller, distinguished commissioners, and members of the public. My name is John Michael Elms. I am a resident of Lithia in District 4. I am here to present the annual report for the County Citizens Advisory Committee, CAC, for 2024. I am currently, as of our March meeting, serving as the Chair of the CAC. With me is our newly-elected Vice Chair, Wanda Broaden, and a newly-appointed member, Pierre Wong. Our membership is made up of two appointed members per a county commissioner. We are currently made up of 12 sitting members with two vacancies that we hope will be filled shortly. Over the last year, the CAC has reviewed the following matters on behalf of the county commissioners: the county's public work strategy, strategic planning, and infrastructure; the county's budget process and consideration of its economic condition; the county's health care plan and health care services; the county's taxes and revenue collection, including the community investment tax, CIT. We've also, since the end of the hurricane season, been inquiring into the county's hurricane preparation, response, recovering, and lessons learned. The results of each of these inquiries over the last year are in the periodic reports that are sent to your offices during the year. The key takeaways from these efforts are the value of deliberate planning by the county, clear communications between the county agencies, leadership, transparency, and accountability. Particularly highlight, the particular highlight of this year was the learning of the remarkable and positive results of the county's response to last year's storms. It was a difficult period in the second half of the year, but the county was amazingly well-prepared and responded well, mitigating the dangers and risks from this unprecedented Bay Area storm season. That isn't to say there weren't lessons learned and things that needed to be improved. But considering what the county faced over a period of three months, the county did remarkably well. And you can see that in the disparity with some of our neighboring counties and municipalities struggling much more as a result of local issues they deal with. CAC membership respectfully requests that we have the ability to operate with the representation from each of your districts. By having a full complement of members, we can address the task you may assign to us or ask us to investigate or undertake. As members appointed by each of you, we look into these issues of concern in a forum setting, gathering information from the staff of the county, the various agencies of the county, industry professionals, and, most importantly, citizens, in a approachable setting that's less intense than probably this setting. We seek to clearly understand through open dialogue between the citizens and residents of the county and their municipal government. We, as the CAC, offer an opportunity to, are offered an opportunity to serve you and our citizens by providing insight as residents into your districts and the county as a whole. Thank you, commissioners, for your time and the work you do for the betterment of our county. Thank you.
And thank you for your comments and update on the CAC, and really appreciate your service on the board and for your leadership as Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Bonnie?
Thank you. We have one regular agenda item. This is Item B1. This is to approve the second modification to the agreement with National Metering Services, and this is for advanced meter-reading infrastructure system. Lisa Ray will present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having us, or me. I'm asking for your approval today on the second modification to the agreement with National Metering Services, Inc., for advanced metering infrastructure systems. That is our AMI metering system. Currently, we have installed around 85,000 of these meters throughout our county. We do have over 250,000 customers that ultimately will have this meter. And what we would like to do is allocate additional funds so that we can make sure that we are implementing this in a more timely fashion. The AMI meters do bring benefits to our customers. They do record flows within 15-minute increments, so if there is an ongoing challenge in a home, a leak of some kind or other, we're able to pull down the data and actually identify when and what is happening. And they also provide more accurate readings of the water that is being used within the home. So we do ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cohen and I have the privilege of a bit more of information on this because of Tampa Bay Water, but if there's anything all seven of us agree on is that we don't like to surprise people with unexpected costs. And we got reports in Tampa Bay Water that when they did this in other jurisdictions, they found that people had been, from what I recall, pretty severely undercharged because the meters were so old, the flows weren't reading properly. And we just heard we've installed 85,000 out of about a quarter million. So my concern is, are we tracking when we've installed these 85,000? Has it, we can see what they were, on average, being charged or being captured for water usage. Have we seen huge upticks in these 85,000 users? And can we try and predict that over the remaining two-thirds?
So we have, you need a decent amount of time to be able to really say if it's making a change because weather conditions and the use for irrigation make a difference. We're prioritizing the older neighborhoods. We did a whole analysis using GIS to make sure that where we were installing the meters were where we had meters that were 20 years and older. Because you are exactly correct, the older meters are not as accurate. We have seen, overall, an increase in those areas. However, I don't want to attribute it 100% to the meters because of weather conditions and the variability that that can add. Our intent is, a year from now, after they've been in place for two years, is to go back and do an analysis against before volumes of water on like-for-like houses because that will allow us to capture some of those weather variabilities.
Okay. I just, I want to make sure that we're not surprising. There's going to be a lot of people that we don't want our emails overflowing from, so I'll move for approval.
Got a motion to approve. Commissioner Wostol, second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote on B1.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
Thank you. Your next item is Item F1, and this is for several board appointments, and Glenda will take you through those three board appointments.
Good morning, commissioners. The first board that we have is Affordable Housing Advisory Board. We have one term expired, so please choose one. Commissioner Hagan.
Kearns.
Commissioner Miller.
Kearns.
Commissioner Myers.
Adewo.
Yeah. Commissioner Cohen.
Adewo, vote, number 1.
Kearns.
Commissioner Wostol.
Kearns.
Can we give a few minutes for Commissioner Sepeda, or should I continue?
Well, it really doesn't matter at this point because Kearns has four votes, so-
True.
Yeah, so why don't we just go to the next one?
Okay.
So the next board is Diversity Advisory Council. We have two positions vacant. Commissioner Hagan, please choose two.
Haywood and Sawyer.
Commissioner Miller.
Antonette Hill Johnson and Sawyer.
Okay. Commissioner Myers.
Haywood and Sawyer.
Commissioner Cohen.
Sawyer and Valdez.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda.
Hill Johnson and Sawyer.
Commissioner Bowles.
Johnson and Sawyer.
Commissioner Wostol.
Johnson and Sawyer.
Okay. So Hill Johnson and Sawyers. Next is Housing Finance Authority. One term has expired. Commissioner Hagan, please choose one.
Hedges.
Commissioner Miller.
Hedges.
Commissioner Myers.
Hedges.
Commissioner Cohen.
Hedges.
Commissioner Cameron Sepeda.
Hedges.
Commissioner Bowles.
Hedges.
Commissioner Wostol.
Hedges.
Hedges for Housing Finance Authority.
We have a motion to confirm.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Wostol, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
Thanks, Glenda.
Thank you. The next item is Item F2. Chair Hagan, this is your item, to introduce a volunteer employee prevention-focused pilot program.
All right, thank you. Board members of the purposes today, I'm just going to make a few comments and refer this over to staff to look into. Apologize for not providing any information in advance of the meeting. It's only because I don't have any. However, I believe that mental health is such a big issue that it warranted me bringing forward this issue and then having staff do a deeper dive. Whether it's high-profile cases of suicide, like the Hillsborough County deputy in August, or the one last month in Brandon, where a man shot his estranged wife's boyfriend and then killed himself, or one last month, I did not get any headlines where a man was found dead from suicide in one of our parks. Suicide is rampant. I've heard, on average, there are 18 suicides a month in Hillsborough County. Mental health has been identified as the most important health problem in Hillsborough County. I know most of us, if not all of us, know someone who has struggled with mental health challenges. I know I've had two friends through the years that have taken their life. I do not claim to have any answers on this. Thankfully, we have wonderful partners like the Crisis Center, who do an unbelievable job of assisting and providing needed help to those who are struggling. However, this problem is so big, they cannot do it alone. In fact, that's why we offer Well for Life programs currently to our employees. And yet, with these services that are out there, the problem appears to be getting worse. I've met with an organization called Emotional Vaccines, who partner with government, school districts, community-based organizations, and companies in an attempt to address mental health challenges before they're clinically diagnosed. It's a prevention model by being proactive and changing culture through education. It's my understanding, it's one of, if not the only, prevention-focused programs designed to mitigate stress, anxiety, and everyday life challenges before they progress to a clinical mental health diagnosis. The problem is so big that in order to fully combat the issues, it takes multiple approaches or ways to address this because they're only escalating. And this preventative model could potentially provide an additional resource to help address this problem. So I want staff to fully vet this. My initial thought is, if there's value in it, perhaps perform a pilot in one of our departments, somewhat similar to what we did a couple of years ago with our Parks Department with Positive Coaching Alliance. I want to stress, I'm not looking to break the bank here, but I do think we should, we can, and we should do, what we can to provide as many options to our employees who may need it. So the motion for today, I'm going to pass it gavel to the Vice Chair, is just to refer this over to staff, have them look into it, see if, and if so, how it could provide value to our employees, bring back a report that we can consider during the budget process, should we determine it's something worth pursuing. So that's the motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Chair Hagan and a second by Harry Cohen. Commissioner Cohen?
Yep.
You're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on that, that with the, we had the Citizens Advisory Council come here earlier. One of the things that I was having one of my representatives on there kind of explore was working with Meg Ross with Crisis Center and with USF, and Jeff Dill with, there's a firefighter program as well, to help out what first responders and trying to conduct a survey amongst all of our first responders that includes the Sheriff's Department and kind of do that, you know, county-wide effort, which may help enhance it. So they're looking at that. They developed something, at least on that side. I know we do a really good job about taking care of our people through the EAP programs and some of these other things, but certainly anything we could do to extend that out to all the employees and making sure that everybody's covered as well, I think is a fantastic effort, so I'm here to support that.
You're absolutely right. And last year, I participated in a press conference with Ashley Moody at the Crisis Center, where that program was focused on law enforcement and the mental health challenges that they have. So I know that we do, that there are avenues to help those that are, you know, in law enforcement, first responders. And I was just thinking, perhaps we start a pilot in a department, maybe it's Parks, doesn't have to be, again, I want staff to vet it, they can come back. And if it's not worthwhile, then we don't pursue it. But I think likely there will be. And again, I'm not looking to spend a whole lot of, a significant amount of money, but if we can offer something, volunteer, that's within reason, something we should consider. That's all it is. So appreciate your comments, though.
Any other discussion? We have a motion by Chair Hagan and a second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your coat.
Motion carried, 7 to 0.
Thank you, board members. Bonnie?
Thank you. The next item is a staff report. This is Item G1. This is to receive the monthly update on the independent stormwater assessment. And then Josh Bellotti is here with John Digges from Blackened Beach.
Josh, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. John Digges with Blackened Beach. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this update for you. Just a quick overview, so we keep it in front of us, of our major objectives of the work that we're performing. That is to evaluate the cumulative flooding impacts from last year's tropical systems, evaluate the stormwater needs and develop conceptual recommendations. So our Phase 1 tasks that are underway and continuing and nearing completion of Phase 1 is to collect all the data, compile it and analyze it and perform that analysis, particularly Hurricane Milton conditions, which caused the massive inland flooding. And also to continue to perform our stakeholder coordination and input. Starting this month, Phase 2 anticipated tasks are as follows with pump station and open conveyance maintenance recommendations. We have developed focus areas for further investigations and recommendations. A potential task coming up in the future are growth management recommendations, continued public education with awareness, guidance, emergency preparedness, a project report and continued stakeholder input. Brief status update for you this morning, our data collection and evaluation. We have most of it collected so far, but we are still collecting more data. It's coming in. Our preliminary analysis of Hurricane Milton flooding has resulted in particular focus areas, which I can talk about just in a minute, just very briefly. All of our commissioner and city council interviews have been completed. That has been very informative for us. Our stakeholder coordination has been ongoing, most recently with the Shanker Law Neighborhood, again with this, with the stormwater team staff. We've been coordinating quite a bit with the City of Tampa and Temple Terrace is coming up. We have not met with them yet. We're, that's coming up next week, actually. And then one highlight is our public involvement and community engagement events are underway. We kicked off last night with our first of eight open house meetings and we've published, we've worked with the team, the communications team to get an engagement hub. Content opened up so folks can interact with that website, understand the project and can directly provide input that we'll receive. On the data collection, review and evaluation front, so I won't go too deep into the details here, but we've reviewed all the hydrologic data. That's the, how high the water got, how much it rained. We, the SCADA information from pump stations, Southwest Florida Water Mains and District data, put all that together and we're comparing it to your flood model results. So that will be coming out as part of our analysis so you can understand how well do our models predict where it's going to flood? That's an important component. On the pump station, we've collected all the pump station data. We're reviewing all that information and are bringing that summary of observations forward. We're also have just recently obtained the City of Tampa's pump station information as well, and we'll be folding that into our recommendations because we understand they, they want to collaborate along with our team. We're continuing to intake county and city data and then prepared, we call it a screening of these focus areas, which we've identified. We presented those at the first engagement meeting last night. There's 20 or 21 of those and we put that information out on the public engagement hub so everybody can understand where the flooding was particularly intense and where the needs additional investigation. Here's a schedule. This has all been posted out there for the open house events. Next week, we have two coming up. And the idea was to hold, is to hold two meetings in each of the four commissioned districts. We'll do one round in April and basically another round in May. I think of it as crowdsourcing the information. We've received direct feedback last night. I was interacting with residents and they were absolutely validating the other information that we had been receiving. And I think that's very valuable. So they'll be giving us direct comment, forums and feedback, and that will also fold into our process. So looking down the road, finally, these are potential capital improvement and policy considerations from capacity improvements, flood storage improvements, your pump station program, your maintenance frequency, development standards. Emergency preparedness is an interesting one that may deserve more action and more analysis in the future. Heard from some residents last night, they were, you know, things like, hey, we need to know where to put our car in case it floods, things like that. We're getting all kinds of interesting information. Stormwater funding and continued inter-agency collaboration. So with that, happy to take any questions from the commission.
Thank you, sir, with the presentation. Commissioner Bowles?
I've gotten a few emails over the last, you know, month or so asking about some of the mitigation efforts as going forward. One of those is kind of focused in the Seminole Heights, Hillsborough River area. Just curious, are we, when I say we, are you and your, and team coordinating as well with City of Tampa? Are you doing separate meetings for City of Tampa individuals or is it, these are just the eight meetings that we're doing and it's kind of focused in the district?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Josh.
Hi, thanks. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations.
Yes, sir.
The eight meetings are the ones that, that the county is pursuing. Those are scheduled throughout the community. Folks, residents from the City of Tampa are definitely more than welcome and invited to come and participate in those meetings. In fact, the Black and Beach team has participated in some City of Tampa community meetings as well. But those eight are the ones that we have set up officially for this effort. We are continuing to coordinate closely with City of Tampa staff. The Black and Beach team has met with council members, the mayor, and then coordinating directly with their staff because our stormwater systems while separate do interface in some key areas. And so those are some of those focus areas that the team is, is looking at as well.
Okay, yeah.
Hopefully that helps answer the interaction that's, that's going on.
Yeah, I know Councilman Viera was very, you know, vocal about having some collaboration on these efforts and making sure that we were all talking, that we weren't working in silos at all. But some of the emails has kind of led me to believe that these were, of my understanding, that these were the only ones and that there weren't separate City of Tampa. I just wanted to verify that, that they weren't doing something else because they're kind of folding in questions that dealt with collapses of some of their systems and that kind of thing, which, you know, that's their purview, but, you know, where those intersections and those, you know, that are coming together, you know, we're addressing those as we can. And we can just direct those people in the districts to where they fall under.
We are. So yeah, to be perfectly clear, there's not a separate set of meetings that we're doing for City of Tampa, but the residents from the city are more than welcome and invited to come and participate in these eight meetings that we have set up. So, yep.
And before I go to Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Bowles makes an excellent point about, you mentioned Councilman Viera and neighborhoods such as, you know, Forest Hills, where half the neighborhood, city, half the neighborhood's county divided by a street. And so it's particularly challenging sometimes with folks. Candidly, a lot of times, they don't realize or recognize I'm City of Tampa or I'm Hillsborough County. And I know that only from past experiences, helping some city candidates, working the polls and people come in, try and vote, and you don't live in, you don't live in the city. So a lot of times, there's confusion. And so to the extent that we can coordinate the best that we can, I know it'd be appreciated and helpful. Commissioner Cohen?
Yeah, thank you very much. And on the issue of Forest Hills specifically, there was a neighborhood meeting Monday night where there was a lot of Hillsborough County staff. I was there. Black and Beach was there as well. And, you know, they have a very discreet issue there related to the pumps, that it was entirely a City of Tampa issue. But I'm pretty confident that that issue is definitely being analyzed as part of this, of this analysis. And what I wanted to say to start was that the first meeting last night was in District 1 and Commissioner Cameron Cepeda and I were there. And I think this is going exactly the way that we were anticipating and hoping. And Commissioner Miller, I don't remember exactly how you crafted the motion, but it is resulting, I think, in a process where people are really feeling like they're being heard. Everyone got time last night that came to this meeting to share their experiences and ask the questions that they needed to ask. And my observation, the second meeting in District 1 will be at the Jan Platt Library, which is deep in the City of Tampa. And my expectation is that that meeting, it'll all be city people for the most part. And they're going to be bringing up totally different issues than you're hearing about in some of these other meetings. They're, they're all going to be concerned about a City of Tampa stormwater project on Howard Avenue that the county has absolutely nothing to do with. And the degree that, that that factors into your analysis, I suppose, is up to all of you. But I, I just want to say that after seeing the information last night and seeing some of these maps, I feel like we're getting exactly what we asked for. And the tough part's going to be when they come back to us with the findings and we have to make decisions about how to move forward. But I'm very confident that they are identifying what issues are out there. And I think also what issues there might not be a fix for, things that we're just going to have to learn to live with or mitigate because mother nature, you know, cannot be tamed 100% of the time. So I, I just wanted to thank the staff and the people from Black and Beach both. There were people there last night from Hillsborough County staff to translate. They made sure that we had people available to help with all kinds of different scenarios. So thank you again.
Commissioner Wostol?
Thank you. I don't want to piecemeal information, but we're 45 days from hurricane season. Are there any major red flags that we need to know about now and take immediate action on or?
Sure.
Because, because there's, there's no benefit to us waiting if we already know the information. I don't want to piecemeal significant points of data, but we are 45 days from hurricane season, so we should know now if we need to take action.
So Commissioner, we're not prepared with a report at this time, but I will say that from what we and staff have seen from the consultant, there's no, there's no one smoking gun or major thing that we need to stop everything and go address right now. I will let you know that the county staff and our contractors are working diligently to ensure that we're prepared for this upcoming hurricane season, doing all the things that we know that we can do. The last hurricane season deposited a lot of debris into our waterways, into our open ditches and pipe systems. And so we're spending a lot of effort, staff has been working overtime, to ensure that those get cleared out before the start of the next season. So those, those maintenance type of things that we look at before every season to make sure that we're prepared are what we're focused on right now and dedicated to, so.
Great.
Yep.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like Commissioner Cohen, just wanted to say thank you for the great work and the updates. It's, it's been very valuable. I know the feedback coming to me personally into my office has been that the people are being heard. I know you have been on tours, you have been actually like going to the sites where some of these issues were taking place. And I'm so thankful that you're here and you're doing this great work and I look forward to the final report and the recommendations to this board. So thank you for the good work to both you and to staff.
Greg, you want to add anything?
Well, I, if you don't mind, Greg, would add one more, just, just quick point of clarification. So we were talking in the beginning there about our coordination with the City of Tampa and I didn't want to lose the fact that we have also been participating in that exact same level of coordination with our other cities, Plant City and Temple Terrace. So just want to provide that assurance that we're coordinating very closely with all three cities, so.
Thank you. We're good? All right. Thanks for the presentation very much. Can we have a motion to accept the report? Motion, Commissioner Wostol, second Commissioner Miller, please accord your vote.
Commissioner Wostol? Motion carried, seven to zero.
Hey, Bonnie?
Thank you. We're on to future discussion items.
Anyone have any future issues? Commissioner Myers?
Well, I don't have a future item, but I would like to recognize Hattie Sumner, she's here. Senator Hattie, she's on the CAC and she wasn't called, so she's been sitting there. So I just wanted the board to know, on the CAC board meeting, she's here. Thank you, Hattie.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so we adjourn.